All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is August 28th and it is 6:05. And it is the Groton Board of Education's regular meeting. And I am honored to start our meeting. The first order of business is a pledge of allegiance, which is behind us. And Ernie, I was wondering if you'd be willing to start us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands its standers, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ernie. Before we get into recognitions and participation of the visitors and delegations, I ask that the board members, both online and in person, to just kind of take, if you could, look at the agenda item of new business number three, which is that most likely we'll be having a motion to go into executive order. What I would like us to be able to do is just move that towards the end, actually the end of our agenda, and go through everything else, just to help out with the Zoom meeting and people. So I would actually just like to, for both people on, online and in person, I just need permission to be able to do that. I think it's two-thirds, just to be able to change the order of the agenda.
It's fine.
Yes. Bev and Jay and William, does that seem okay to you guys?
It's fine with me.
Thank you, Bev.
It's fine with me.
All right, I get over two-thirds. All right. And so the second part of our meeting tonight is the recognition and participation of visitors and delegations. I will, gonna throw that over to Superintendent Austin.
So I was delighted to see that CAPE sent us a letter on your behalf, Kim Shepherdson Watson. And congratulations are in order. You were one of nine board members recognized for such an honor. You've earned the CAPE Certificate of Boards of Ed Member Designation. And it's with your attendance at numerous CAPE and CAPS conventions, CAPE workshops, and programs, and other events, that you've been acquired a variety of skills and have earned such an honor. So we really applaud you, and we thank you for your service to this district.
Thank you. For those who don't understand what CAPE is, CAPE is the Connecticut Association of the Boards of Education.
And second on my list was to recognize Teri Henkel, who is our JROTC Senior Naval Science Instructor. He has worked all summer long to get ready for this. This is something that has been in the works since 2014, that I know of. And we really were granted the, what they call the National Naval Defense Cadet Corps, which is the precursor to JROTC. And we're really looking forward to having it be a full JROTC, maybe even this year. So I really applaud Teri Henkel. It's taken quite a bit of organization. The federal government has supplied, really, all of the books and the curriculum and the major supplies that the kids would need to be able to, you know, do the program. So he will come back, though, and he can share with us his enthusiasm, you know, probably next month, and let us know. We have over 100 students who are participating, both boys and girls. So really, it's a, you know, in a military district such as ours, the largest student military group, this is something really to be proud of. And then also here with us is Ernie Koschmider and his food service team. And they deserve great accolades, that they have worked tirelessly, like they always do, but even more so this summer. Not only did they feed the Groton school kids and at all those feeding sites, but they also helped support Norwich when we got the call to give them, you know, some helping hands. The federal government, of course, pays for the meals, but it was the people, and it's our people, who kind of rose to the occasion. And I just want to say that we got email after email, really applauding your good work and saying so thank you. But I think that the sweetest thing I got in the mail was a handwritten note from their prior superintendent, Abby Doliver, who's very beloved in town, and I think she was helping with getting some of the meals started. So just want you to know how much of an impact you made. And Ernie's gonna come up and talk about a few other things that have been going on with food service programs.
Thank you, Superintendent Austin. I just wanted to say that it's all because of those folks sitting right there that, who do it tirelessly every single day. When the temperatures were 90, 100 degrees, hot and humid, these ladies here made sure that those kids in our community and also Norwich had breakfast and lunch every single day this summer. And I could not do it without them. They are the most talented individuals, and there's more of them, but those are the, those are my right-hand people right there. So thank you, ladies, for all that you've done this summer. And just a quick recap, in 2022, these ladies here did 30,630 meals, and that was over 39 days. And that was last year. And that is Monday through Friday, of course, and same kind of heat and weather, when it rains and stuff, we go out. Doesn't mean the kids don't eat, we're out there knows weather. I just want to tell you, this year, and this includes Norwich, we had a 64% increase. We did 47,876 meals with one less operating day than we did last year. And that is back and forth to Norwich. It's approximately, we had four sites up there, and each one ranged from 27 miles one way to 32 miles one way. So it's up, it's back, it's empty, reload, up and back again. So some of those ladies were putting on 100-plus miles on their vehicle every single day, all summer long. And, you know, it's hard to believe, but there's still people in our town where we can see that there's high need, especially when school is out, that the meals stop, the consistency stops. I can't thank you guys enough for authorizing us to do the summer meals program free of charge, the children 18 years or younger. We've had families in Norwich, when we went up there, Chris Roburge and myself, we had one day to go up there and do a site survey. We had to look at the sites, we had to estimate what we thought we were going to do. We had a family come up to us and give us hugs, thanking us, asking us if we were going to do meals, they didn't know what they were going to do. They had three little kids that were hugging Chris and I, and the mom didn't know what she was going to do. They was, they were within walking distance of Unca's Memorial School there in the neighborhood, and they so depend on that service. And unfortunately, the folks up there did not think or plan ahead to make sure that these families were not left behind. So I thank the board once again, and of course Susan, for when the call came in from the State Department of Ed asking if we could jump lines, if you will, jump borders and go up to Norwich, because we were the only district close enough that had the capacity to do so. We had the staff, we had the food, we had the vehicles. So that's why we, I mean, it wasn't within 10 minutes, as Sam and Susan says, do what you gotta do. And we went up there and took care of those kids roughly about 250 to 300 meals a day over the four sites. And you mentioned former Superintendent Doliver, she is, she's a dear, I love her to death. She was right there at a place called Bully Busters, which is in St. Mark's Church. They, was, that was their donation site, that the community was coming together, dropping off juice boxes, loaves of bread, peanut butter and jelly. They were making sandwiches. Abby was in there with about seven or eight of her colleagues and friends, making meals. So we were dropping off accompaniments, stuff that they didn't have enough of to make a full lunch for kids. We weren't able to claim those meals, because again, they weren't full meals, but we supported Bully Busters and given them the components when they needed it, such as juice boxes. I drop off 10 cases at a time, bags of chips, we would drop off peanut butter. And Abby was good, she was, let us know what they needed. I didn't want to interfere with that operation, because they were very, they were very proud to be able to do that for their community and give back. There was no way that we were going to interfere with that. And, you know, we concentrated on the rec programs, and one of their NFA was another big site. This year also, we did the first ever in the state, we did our garden fresh bags. And what I did is I asked Groton Utilities if they would support me in $3,800 contribution, because that would enable me to provide 300 garden fresh bags to our severe need sites throughout Groton every Friday. What we did is we get local produce from farms when it comes in, Maple Lane Farms, we would buy. And again, I don't ask for donations, but I purchased with our local dollars donated by Groton Utilities. And we're able to hand out 300 bags every Friday to kids to take home. And they would have like a head of lettuce, couple tomatoes, couple cucumbers. It varied, there was beets, it was, there was blueberries at one time. Very, very unique program. Commissioner Herbert came down not once, but twice to Groton, because he was amazed at how we were able to find the funding, use his Connecticut Fresh Bags, because he's the commissioner, so he loved those bags. And we would hand these out to families to take home, and we would put little notes inside. Hey, try, try the lettuce, you know, with ranch dressing, roll it up with, you know, tuna fish or something. You don't always have to have bread. So that was a huge program. And next year, I planned to expand it by looking for more donations from Electric Boat and Pfizer. And lastly, the, we were able to employ three high school students for our farm-to-school program this summer, all summer long, three high school kids. We're making 15 bucks an hour, you know, and they loved it. These kids were fantastic. They worked with us, they went to the farms, helped pick up the produce and stuff and bring back. They packaged the stuff for the Friday distributions. They were out there in the field, handing out the stuff to the kids and the families to take home. And then we had four high school kids that worked East from Point Beach. So there was seven kids right there this year that we're proud to say that we were able to help fund through the summer and gave them their first job. We've had such a great group of kids this summer. And again, all of this was, you know, I can't do it without this team that's sitting behind me. You know, I can't feed the kids like these ladies do every single day, not just during summer, but we're gonna be opening up our schools Wednesday, and they're gonna be right there, taking care of these 5,000 kids every day. So thank you. I know what leadership looks like in Groton, and we have it. And I can tell you, some communities don't have what we have, and I've seen it firsthand to know what that looks like. So thank you, guys, for all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you all.
I think that one of the things that I have come to realize, that people can't do their best and be their best if they don't have food. That I am so happy that we search now, really, I agree with your watch a lot, as it gives us feedback. I, I, we just, we do better, and we, and we can function better. And what a relief it must have given to the families to know that their kids and themselves could have something to eat for two out of the three meals, and to also try some garden. It's just so important. And so thank you for your willingness to kind of say yes, and to do it, and to work as hard as you work. You know, my proud moment is that my mama was a middle school baker at Mansfield Public School, and she baked for the whole school system. And so I realized forever what it was like to make sure that kids were fed and people were fed well. And so to, it's such a, once again, Groton proud moment, to be able to know that you and your colleagues are what did that. So thank you very much.
Any other comment from the board?
I would like to thank the staff at Eastern Point Beach also. The food has been phenomenal this year. My husband and I go quite often at night, and it's just lovely. So thank you for doing that and taking over that valuable resource in our, in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And good luck on Wednesday.
And send me those stats, so I can put them in the notes for everybody.
Good luck for the new school year, ladies. And Ernie. So I'm gonna move us on to the comments from citizens. This is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens, and each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. And presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker of presentations and cannot respond during this part of the comments to citizen portion. And citizens should make their presentation either from the Zoom or, if they are present, from the podium, and state their names and addresses for the record. Is there anyone in present that would like to address the board?
No.
No, you're just here to have fun?
Yeah.
I love that. Is there anyone online? It's good to see our buddy Joan is online. Joan, it's good to at least see your name. So hearing that, I am moving us down. I believe that student representatives have not been allocated yet to service. Is that correct? Student reps?
We have two who are getting ready to come, but they aren't here yet, so they will be coming.
So they'll sit next to?
Yep, they'll sit next to Sam.
Sam, because he's been?
We have Zoe back.
Oh, good.
That's what I hear.
Yeah.
All right. The other person, do you know?
Sam, can you read his name? McCoy, I think it's the McCoy. Calvin.
Calvin McCoy and Zoe.
And I think there are a couple backups, too, because they get so busy.
Yes.
Are we, are we gonna have two seniors, two juniors?
I think that's what we have, so that they can kind of come up and take their place, so we don't get shorthanded again.
All right, so we're gonna be moving on to the superintendent and administration reports. And so Susan, please.
All right. Well, we are really prepared to open up our schools and very excited to do so. I call this the year of all hands on deck, being the military child myself. As we search for a new business director, I'm so grateful to have Lori Lapine, who is the Director of HR, really being able to do both departments and check in, and she checks in with me daily as we kind of review budgets and make sure that everything is running smoothly. And also for new high school principal at Fitch High School, and also equally blessed to have Dr. Phil Piazza. They want to keep him, but I won't let them. He's there to make sure schools open up, and he's been a principal multiple times, middle school, elementary, and also high school assistant principal. So I think you're having fun, actually.
So far, two days in.
Yeah.
Still smiling.
It's going, yeah. So I just thought nobody better to be there for us and get the year kicked off. So I actually, at convocation last Friday, I said, "The Navy calls this deal one ship, one crew. Every member on the boat has really important work to do for our national safety and security, and they need to all show up together and be present." And so we really look at teaching and learning similarly in our Groton public schools staff, and that includes faculty, teachers, administrators, paraeducators, our food service people, our custodians and maintenance, you know, and our administrative assistance people in the buildings and at central office. It really is one team. It's teamwork. And we've kind of made it through these past three years, even during a pandemic, and we're looking forward to getting better together. That's the theme this year. Also, we want to say that at Fitch High School, besides the JROTC, we also have Ed Rising as another course selection that's offered to kids. There's been a lot of curriculum development done over the summer to just revise things. And we also have hired a French and Spanish teacher for the elementary through our last DODIA World Language Grant. So fourth and fifth graders will get the carousel model, which used to be done in the middle school, which then enables our middle schoolers to start on their three-year journey in foreign language, which is exciting. So that's it about, I mean, I know Sam will tell you more about the facilities and all the hard work that's been done over the summer, the things that were on his list and not on his list to do, and, and all that work to get those buildings ready. It was a buzz this summer. Every school had a program, had, we had ESY over at Northeast Academy, we had the rec camps at Mystic River and Thames River, we had Fitch High School had entertained both middle school and high school kids for enrichment and credit recovery, and then we had camps at the Groton Middle School and elementary camp, STEM camp at the Charles Barnum School. So it was hopping this summer. And I know even the cleaning crew, they, they're all hands-on-deck kind of crew, too.
And just to note, I'd like to make a point that the buildings look fantastic.
They do, they look beautiful, they're shining, really nice.
Just a shout out to the crew and to Sam, they look ready to go.
Excuse me, Susan. For the benefit of the public, what's ESY?
Early?
Extended school.
Extended school year.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. For special education students. And then really, the review of the summer programs, I just did, and I'm trying to think if there was anything else with that review.
About how many students participated?
We have, I have that in here. We have numbers, the GMS Summer Steam Camp, there was a total of 77 students. I don't have the numbers in front of me, though, for the elementary.
I think it was more like 300 for the elementary.
Yeah, they, they had, and then?
I've got the numbers for the ESY. Do you have that?
Yeah, what you included in your board notes, the high school summer school report is there as well, where I think, I don't know if we've mentioned this before, we had 111 students enrolled in 167 courses. 95 of those students completed over 136 courses. So in terms of credit recovery, you know, we had 98 students earn credit, 16 did course advancement, meaning they took classes to sort of get ahead. And that, they were a combination of both Apex and teacher talk classes. There were 79 in the Apex and 88 in teacher talk.
And even the Apex had a certified teacher on board to help support the students, so there was teaching going on even with the online program. The other thing I wanted to mention, Denise Doolittle, who's our pupil personnel director, gave me the numbers K through 12. And this is, they're identified in their IEP Individual Education Program to be able to receive these services. And there were 110 K through 12, 17 preschools. There was some speech, some reading only, some PT. So really, and then there were the ABA students who were able to stay the program for autism for the extra two weeks, so six weeks total, and there were 44 of those students. So the program really took care of 200 total students for the six weeks at some point. So, and I just wanted to add that professional learning is happening today and tomorrow, and I couldn't be more proud of the staff and some of the presenters, who really are our staff. This, since you've learned about the science of reading, I just want you to know that for a full year, they've been working on a K through three model. We've purchased the UFLY University of Florida Phonics Program, and they've really taken the Wilson Program, the UFLY Program, and some of the TC, and they've developed our own comprehensive phonics program. And the teachers were so excited. They, they've heard about it last year, but they were all brought together at each of their individual grade levels, K1 and 2, to really see what's been rolled out. And I didn't want them to do a lot of make and take, that's when they have to like spend a couple hours cutting and pasting. We did that for them over the summer, and they couldn't be more pleased, that they had everything at their fingertips, the curriculum is on our website. So that's one example. We did that in mathematics as well, with some of the new units. The middle school and the high school had some great articulation, vertical articulation, which we talk all about, but now that we have coordination, 6 through 12, they were able to do that and some teamwork and team building, because through the Culture and Climate Committee, they're actually making goals and helping to resolve some of the issues that they were seeing last year, and that's really important. So the principals have shared that, they've been in working groups and working some of these out, and then doing some team building together. So we've really, and, you know, we've really done some good work in just these couple days. And we had a multilingual learner teacher, a professor from Southern who came back again this year, and we got positive, positive rave reviews on the work that she did, so.
And then even the work, I think you've mentioned, you might have mentioned this at the last meeting, you know, we had Kim Marshall come and work with our administrative team to talk about evaluation and feedback. So that's something that we're gonna continue to, to work on, to build the skills of the administrators, to build those connections with staff, and to help move the learning forward and to give constructive feedback for growth.
And it's quite a shift, because it really is something that we're looking at principals being in and assistant principals being in every single classroom, like maybe up to 10 times. So it's not just a one-shot deal, like once a year. And it's really for support and verbal feedback, and that's also making those connections. And so we really are believing that this is gonna be good. So that's what I have for you. And then we're gonna turn it over to Lori.
So just, before we, yeah, this would be a good place. So is there any questions for Susan and Phil, who is slash assistant, not slasher, assistant superintendent and slash principal of the high school? Is there any questions? All right.
Have a good year.
Yeah, absolutely.
He's only there for a couple months.
All of you.
Thank you.
Yes, all of you.
Thank you.
So how many people have been interviewed for the?
We haven't interviewed, it closed today, because we had to extend it, but I think we've got a really good talent pool, and we're gonna start Friday, and we've got an amazing team.
Friday, we start looking through the applications and identifying those we want to interview.
Yeah, and we have the profile, the leadership profile. I believe I sent it to the board, but I can send it again if you didn't get it.
We got it. We got it. All right.
So as Susan talked about, Lori Lapine, who, once again, I know Susan talks about that, but I just, on behalf of the board, once again, all the stuff that you do for the district, how you help the board, and now pushing in and helping, not only doing the human resource, but also doing the business manager. And so my thanks to you, and the board's thing.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So I'm gonna give your interim reports here, and just bear with me, I'm gonna share the screen for those that aren't here. Here comes Jay. Attachment one here.
You'll be able to tab.
I will, okay. Control.
If you toggle over to where it has, there it goes.
All right, got it. Okay. Can we? Okay. Okay, so, this is, I'm just gonna bear with me, scroll down to the bottom of the object code summary, so it's on the screen, so everybody can see. So spending for the month of August to date has been fairly normal. Nothing unusual has really come up. Our current spending is a little over $5 million, and our percent to budget, 86.1% of budget spent to date. So nothing unusual has really come out of the month, it's all been spending we've seen in the past.
And it was, it's not too far off from what we saw in July, but we did know that a lot of teacher salaries were encumbered at that time.
Right.
So that's why it showed larger in July, but now it's kind of gone.
The encumbrances will come down as we.
Right, correct, correct.
So any questions on the object code summary before I move forward to the healthcare report?
No, I just want, welcome to the, to the, thank you for coming in, and thank you for being online, which is for those who are watching us, both Jay and William were online and now are in person, and it's good to see you. Thank you.
It's nice to see everybody around the table. It is. Okay, so I am gonna proceed to attachment number two, which is the healthcare summary for the claims through July. Our current healthcare spending is 89.9% of Anthem's projection. It is a little bit higher than last July, we're up about 12%. I did the actual calculation, but one month really isn't enough of a trend to really determine where we're going to see if we're truly up or down, so we'll have to get, you know, some more months under our belt before we know for sure what the impact really is. But right now, we're still performing favorable to Anthem's projection. Any questions on the insurance?
Laura, did we, did we finalize the previous year yet against the budget?
Well, we're just waiting for a report from the town on the fund reserve, so we can balance to that. We're hoping to have that for the next finance facilities meeting, we're working towards that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions? I do. Please. Lori, I'm asking you to flip on a different hat, all right? This is your HR hat. So how are we statistically with our staffs? Are we, is that something I, are we gonna talk about, or no?
Well, that actually probably should have been on a review of, that's probably an oversight that Susan and I did in developing the agenda.
Actually, it's not. We have it going in.
We, we have it going in board notes this week. So, it's just to get it accomplished, the, the task. So, it's not on the agenda?
That's true.
But I will get it to you in board notes, and we can put it on our future agenda.
All right.
We'll be sure to do that.
Take your hat off. No problem.
I just always think it's good for the public to hear how we're doing, because there's been so much of that in the newspaper. I have no problem of that happening, but we would just need to agree to add that as an agenda item. This is a regular board meeting, so it's not, it's not something new. And it's the same thing as what we just did, which is that we are changing the lineup in our agenda. Am I correct, or do I need to go to a motion?
To do what, to add?
To add, to add a, an item to the agenda.
Yeah, that's, that's a heavy-duty thing, because the, the agenda is posted, it's meant to be posted ahead of time, so that our meeting is public, people know it's going to be discussed.
Yeah.
So, it's traditionally underhanded, quote-unquote, to slip in new items while you're reading, oh, by the way.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. I, I guess for me, I would, in light of that, and the fact that this is probably still a moving target with some of the positions, that maybe we could ask for a full report in the, in our September meeting.
Yeah.
And, because I'm hoping, because I think that we have a lot to go on in terms of all the stuff that has happened in the building and grounds. But I, maybe the numbers will be more solidified, and you can kind of talk about openings and, and positions filled and stuff.
We do have a little bit of information, we'll be putting in board notes, too, so you get a kind of glimpse.
I think we could, you could address it in nine letters and comments sometimes from board members, maybe.
I, I still am going to make the decision, I, I'm not saying we're not going to talk about it. How about if we wait and we have it a full agenda item? Unless people would like for us to move forward and we can add it as an agenda item, understanding that we will not have the full information, because Lori and Susan are not fully prepared to talk about it. Is that all right?
Yeah.
If I, if I could add, you could add, in a normal organization, you could add by two-thirds, but we're not a normal organization.
Okay.
So, we're governed by state law, which I haven't reviewed the paragraph, but I imagine it probably frowns on adding things at the last minute.
So, with that, let us move to the Director of Building and Grounds. Sam, have you been a little busy?
Thank you, Lori.
Lori, thank you. You're welcome.
Someone came and sent a line.
Might need the mic closer to you there, Sam. Bring the mic closer to you.
So, yeah, we've, we've been doing a little bit, so I will declare that the schools are operationally and aesthetically ready for opening day.
That's a good thing.
Thanks to the custodial supervisor, Wendy Gaston and his staff, and the suburb that they did, and for the Magnet School Day, Tom Pigman and his Magnet School staff, for still doing some finishing touches. We're all trying to wrap up the finishing touches. You may know that this was one of the ranges of summers that we've had in quite some time, so a lot of the outside work. As time goes by, we were late, so we were filtered at the school, which we'll have done by January of today. Wanted to tell you about Mystic River Magnet School. Heard that it had a water leak there, an iron flood within the building, happened on the same weekend when we had torrential rains throughout the state. The other end of the state got worse than we did. And so, when I was talking, when I called contractors to see who'd be coming and get us up and running again, of course, most of them were real busy down the other end of the state, but we were fortunate enough to get a couple of contractors to come by. And the school is now put back together. The walls have taken apart, the cabinets that were taken out, the lockers, so on and so forth. Old reason, fire alarms. There are a couple of lights that are still on back order, but a couple of lights in the hallway, although it doesn't really affect too much in that foyer area. So, there's a couple of lights that are still on back order. And there's one other item, I can't remember what it was. So, one other item that's on back order, but not, I forgot this from opening. That might also note that when I walked into Mystic River Magnet School this morning, not funny, George was sucking up the water from the fountain on the first floor, which sprung the same leak that we found in the cell. We will be finding out whether this is a manufacturing defect, because it's the same model unit, or whether it was a, an installation problem by the contractor, because it was the same contractor that did both those times, too. So, there is a tank that's inside a bottle filler unit. It is, this was no good.
Joan says she can't hear you. Joan, can you hear me now?
Yes, Sam, I can.
Well, it's good to hear your voice, I'd rather see your face.
You will, you will, soon.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, so, between the insurance company and so on, we'll be doing a full investigation as to exactly what the cause was, whether it was a manufacturer defect or whether it was a installation issue, so that'll be coming forward.
Can I just add that there is insurance, thank goodness? And we've reached out to the town, because the bill for, you know, is twenty-five thousand dollars for deductible. And the bill, I think, for the whole thing was close to seventy-five thousand. So, we have requested that they may be, be able to help us out, especially if this is a manufacturing problem or a construction problem. So, just wanted, I, you know, I'm not sure that we've gotten positive yet on that, but I'm pursuing it.
And, and so, we, we have shut down that bottle filler on the first floor, too, awaiting for some parts, to see if we can at least get a couple of tanks in, so that the kids can fill their bottles there. The fountains work, but the bottle fillers do not. One of the other projects that we completed this summer was the Northeast Academy Curtain Drain on the north, northeast side of the building. We still have some money left in that account, C I P account. And we'll keep an eye on the other side of the building, and we'll make a determination whether we'll do a, a second curtain drain on the opposite side of the building after we get through the year and see how things are going. The Groton Middle School Field Lights. The town is actually cutting a purchase order for that, so that we can order parts or so that the contractor, Musco, can order the parts. Takes about six weeks to get the parts. It looks like we'll start the project toward the end of September, and the agreement is that we will have it done before the end of the year. Solar projects at both Groton Middle School and Mystic River School are to begin on September fourth, eleventh and September twenty-fifth. They haven't determined which school they're going to go to first, but one will start on the eleventh, the other will start on the twenty-fifth. And again, those projects are expected to be completed by the end of the calendar year. We're also doing an L E D lighting upgrade at Fitch High School. And the company that is doing that is Resource Lighting, and they are mobilizing now, which means they are getting their trailers to the site, getting the supplies to the site, and they will be doing that project over the next couple of months. They'll be working in the evenings while the kids aren't in the building. And of course, the, if you've driven by the Groton Middle School lately, you may have seen that we put a lot of concrete in the ground and for the pergola or the, what we're calling the outside classroom. So, that's adjacent to the existing patio on the lower level main entrance of the school, outside of the art rooms. So, that, we've, we've made the elevation of that equal or to the same elevation as the patio itself outside the art rooms, with a, a small sidewalk going to it to join them together. So, they just finished a slab today and did a broom finish on that, so they'll be finished cleaning up tomorrow. And we will start the erection of the, of the pergola itself once we get some curing of the concrete. So, that'll be happening in the next couple of weeks, probably.
And that was the last purchase from the M S A P grant, if you remember. And we really were so thrilled to be able to make that purchase, because thinking of that STEAM school, you know, this is really an advantage to have the outdoor classroom. We needed it during COVID, but we will still use it during this time.
I don't think I've forgotten anything, so if there are any questions, I'd be happy.
No, it's been a few things on your list, and then there was the central office.
That's.
Water issues.
We have, we have a water problem at Central Office, but we, I think we've narrowed it down now. We replaced the pump, so it's not a pressure issue, it's actually a flow problem, is what we've determined. Because those pipes were installed in about nineteen sixty-five, something happened in one, one of the pipes, it probably, more than likely, at one of the valves, something broke off, a piece of rust or something, and slowed, so it slowed down the flow of water, so that toilets aren't flushing as well as we'd like. So, we've changed some toilets to low-flow toilets, so that we can continue to operate. But it's a situation that, not a pleasant situation that we're still working on. In order to rectify the situation, it's going to take quite some time to go through one end of the building to the other to find that particular place where this obstruction is in, in the line, so.
So, besides facility and food service, Sam also oversees transportation. We've been shorthanded there. Our transportation coordinator is flying solo, because we lost a member, you know, that was working with her. So, she's been working overtime, really trying to get these bus routes together. And we had someone in from the bus company today, helping to oversee that. So, bus lists did go out. Some parents have called, and just know that we appreciate the call, because if they're telling us that something's not right, I'd rather know about it now than after the buses roll out, so.
Right, so, as far as transportation is concerned, Jenny Aquino has been working really hard at that with the new program. Leslie Davis was flown up by S T A from, I think she was in Florida, to work with us this week, so that she has somebody in the office working with her on the pro, on the, on the program. And Lauren Lyon from my office has been back and forth with, between Power School and Transportation, trying to help out with that and answering phones and stuff. So, they're working feverishly to make sure that things run as smoothly as possible on opening day.
A lot of collaboration goes on behind the scenes, just letting you know.
Sam, I had a question, I couldn't quite hear you when you were talking about, were they the tanks to fill water bottles, or are they the drinking fountains? And is it at Mystic River?
It is Mystic River School, and they are the bottle fillers, yes.
And wouldn't, are the same ones at Thames River?
They, they are the same ones at Thames River. They're also the same ones that we installed at Fitch High School. It's the same model.
So, the same model, so could we anticipate future problems with?
I'm hoping not.
Not. I mean, if, if there's a defect.
We have experience at it now, but I, we're hoping that we don't have any further problems.
But I think we're investigating to see what's the root cause.
We're trying to figure out exactly what happened, so. I've got another, actually have another bottle filler section on order, so that I can swap that one out, get one out of the building, so that we can open it up and find out what was going on with that, so that they can get at least one operating at the school.
Thank you for all that, Sam.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lori, yeah.
Jay.
So, we migrated from TransFinder to a new system for S T A, is that?
Yeah, I'm not going to say it right, but it's Tranversa. I, I don't think there's an S in Tran, we were calling it Tranversa, but I don't think the S is in there, so it's Tranversa, yes. It's a program that a lot, a lot of districts have used in the past. Some of our people have had experience with it previously. S T A, we were able to negotiate with S T A, and they actually purchased the program for us, and they are supporting us with the training. They have been training us all summer long. And as I said, they, we, we asked them, we told them last week that we're, we're looking to, to beef up the staff in there before the start of school, so they brought their trainer up, and she's in the office working with Jenny this week.
So, this is a, a program they're using in other districts, and they recommended? And this is within the contract we already have, that they, they did this upgrade?
We're not paying additional for it, that's part of the deal.
Yeah, we didn't pay for it.
Okay.
But it is a new program, so people might be seeing some differences.
Right, okay, thank you.
New to us, yes.
New to us.
Any other questions?
Any driver shortages on the horizon?
They actually, presently.
Not going.
Presently, they have a couple extra drivers.
Wow.
And, and the, and their supervisor got her license over the summer, too.
And so, we will be looking for doing a placement, I guess, piggybacking on your, on your question, is looking for replacement for the open position on our end as well?
Yeah, so it's already been posted. Lori's already gone, yeah, that, that's already been posted.
Okay.
Liz.
When were the bus schedules put out to the public?
I'm sorry.
The bus schedules, you know, the routes, when were they put out to the public?
We were hoping for Friday, but we let parents know that we needed a little time to check on it, so.
All right, just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you.
And one thing everybody should remember is, hopefully, there's some public listening, too, maybe, is that every time we add or subtract a student from one of those runs, it changes. It may, it may very well, if there isn't already a bus stop there with kids there, if it's an added stop or one taken away, it'll, it'll affect the timing of all those other stops on that run. Especially because we're going from one end of town to the other end with the Magnet School, so.
The bus drivers have been involved. We've asked them to do, you know, a run or a few runs, and then give the feedback back to Jenny, so we know that they're working, running. Because the thing with a, a piece of software is they really don't know our roads. They know what they think they know, it's a piece of equipment, but it's the bus drivers doing the runs that really know. So, we do appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, one little side note was that we had some bus stops on Flanders Road, which wouldn't be a problem, except it was Flanders Road and Iannic, so. That one's been corrected.
That really wasn't fun. I'm glad we figured that out.
They could have stopped by and seen me, that's at work.
Anything else for Sam?
Just as, like, with Lori, Sam, thank you and your staff for the work that you guys have done over the summer. And I think about, like, all the work that you guys were doing, and then all of a sudden, Central Office issues kind of popped up, which then had to divert some of your staff to kind of taking a look at that. So, I know you guys have been really busy, and thank you very much for doing that.
Okay, I'll let them know, thank you.
Yep. Same with Mark Russell. Thank you very much for your hard work, and Caitlin. Yeah, I just said I did.
Thank you. All right, so we're off to, we're off and running to the committee reports. Policy, I know that we have a policy being brought to us tonight.
We have policy P five one 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 three, and it's protection of undocumented students, and its requirements are hefty and really designed to protect kids who are undocumented from any kind of harassment or illegal activity directed at them.
Curriculum, you still are on summer hiatus?
Yes, we, we meet again, we come back on September eighteenth.
Supa. Finance and facilities?
We met on August first. Lori reviewed the contracts for the diesel that was locked in, and the fuel oil, we're, we're still using that. We also reviewed the end-of-year unexpended funds, and she explained the encumbrances to us. As you mentioned earlier, some staff choose to be paid on an annualized basis, and so we have to encumber that for the payroll through the, beyond the end of the fiscal year. We discussed the, the health insurance reserve and We discussed the health insurance reserve, and Sam gave us his update on school facilities.
And communications, we're going to meet today, but that meeting has been canceled. And we have, over the summer, reviewed your communication plan. So others is negotiations. We are currently, the board, we are still currently in negotiations, and at the present moment, we are in the phase, it's called mediation, and we have not heard back from Floyd.
Just heard that they accepted our extension, so we have a little more time. So they're working out a date that works for everybody.
So a date for us to go into mediation?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. And I don't think that there's any other contracts coming up.
Yet.
Before, yet. All right. And Learn?
Learn does not meet over the summer, but I am still on the building committee, and we had a meeting last Friday for the additions to the Ocean Avenue Learning Center, which are, you know, going along and hopefully will be completed by the end of August.
Yay. So town and city council, I believe I sent you, you were all forwarded an email from me that I had sent just in regards to the liaison meeting, and Susan and I, there's just so many things, like unfunded mandates that are coming down from the State Board of Education, and also just from legislation. And I just thought kind of like one-stop shopping, so I have sent out to our colleagues in the town and the city about whether they would like to use the liaison as a way of the reps can kind of come and talk to the liaison board and then report back to the other bodies instead of having the legislators like kind of hit every single body. So I was just trying to think of like one-stop shopping, and I haven't really heard back from anyone. But that liaison meeting, the next one is going to be October 5th, for anyone who would like to know. And then our next one is the AGSA, GEA, BOE liaison, and that's also in October, but I do not remember.
Make sure we get it out, I have to look back.
Yeah.
Groton Scholarship?
Didn't make this summer. Waiting to hear from when they're going to reconvene.
Okay. Athletic fields?
So there was actually a call for a meeting last Thursday. Unfortunately, it failed due to a lack of a quorum. So it became a discussion instead. Nothing was voted on, but Kim did send all of us the documents that were reviewed, and they're trying to determine if they need to constitute another meeting to actually take a vote to go forward with the request for quotation, and also a survey they want to do.
Trails and library, I believe, are with Matthew Schulman, and so he's not here to make a report. And then the permanent school building committee, they, have they met, Sam? The permanent school committee?
We have not met since, I don't know, quite a while.
Okay. And then?
We have no report.
Because that's?
October, I think.
That's October, okay. So we're now down to the action items. The first one on the agenda is our consent agenda, which has all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion, and we will allow points of clarification. And so I just need a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second to that?
Sure.
I have William. Any discussion on any of the meeting minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor to accept our consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? That motion has passed. We would like to thank Costco Wholesale, who had donated 75 student backpacks with school supplies, which would include zippered pencil pouches, pocket-style folders, 12-inch rulers and erasers to the Groton Public School. Once again, thank you Costco for being a great partner for us. There is no old business, and we're moving on.
Hey, Kim, where do the backpacks go? And how do we determine who gets a backpack, since there's only 75 of them?
Good question, Bev.
So in my board notes, Beverly, I wrote that a team of Groton teachers and staff went out, including myself, went out to Branford Manor, they had a great picnic, and they were, the police was giving out some backpacks, and then we had a table. We also had HR there and gave families some information. There were some curious people who were interested in Groton Public Schools, and it was just a great event. We were there from 2:00 to 5:00, and it was great to see the kids. The kids were hugging their teachers, and we were giving out backpacks, and I purchased some books that we were giving out to go in the backpacks.
Okay, I read that in the board notes, but I didn't know the backpacks came from high school.
Yeah, that was a good thing.
Thank you.
So our first thing for new business is policy. William, would you be willing to read the motion for number one, please?
Motion to approve policy P 5111.3, protection of undocumented students as a first reading.
Can I have a second to that, please?
I'll second it.
I have Rita for second. Discussion, please.
So I just can start it by saying it's all in green, so this is something that's been on our tracker sheet for probably a couple of years. And we had actually done another policy where if students were, you know, called in to talk to a police officer, that really, the idea was that we'd never turn over a child to anyone, you know, without the parent permission and that kind of thing. So in the same vein, this was written to really protect undocumented students from anybody from the outside coming in to interview a kid or to take a child. So that's the essence of it. Right. And then, you know, it involves the superintendent getting involved if I need to, the principal being involved, and to make sure that, you know, we have all the legal information that we would need.
Susan, how are the teachers and school administrators and staff being trained to implement this policy?
With any of the board policies, I first start with a principal's meeting. We send it out to everyone, and we talk about ways that we're going to communicate it with staff. And it does get sent out to the staff, but it's really up to the principals to make sure that the teachers have the latest policy and know how to interact with it. Jay?
And I'd just like to mention that having them all online now.
Yes.
Electronically searchable, updated.
So much better.
Yeah, updated all the time instead of.
The policy book?
Filing the policy book, which I used to delegate to my son. Now it's all right on screen.
Yep. I don't even think I've seen that book in a long time because I use the digital version much better.
Right. Makes a great doorstop.
Like all binders.
Any question? Dean?
Hey, guess what? I want to be the heavy. So there are two issues here. One's really a non-issue. It was addressed by the Supreme Court decision in Plyler back in 82. And if you've ever read the Plyler decision, in 75, Texas passed a law saying, if you're here illegally, if you're a child, you're here illegally, you don't get to use our schools. That went all the way to the Supreme Court, 1982, the Supreme Court, 54, said, no, you can't, you can't do that. So that's one question that's a non-question. The other question has to do with what happens when, and we're talking in general terms, but you're very specific here, what happens when the feds show up? And I will admit, I've had feelings of wanting to stick it in Uncle Sam's eye from time to time, but it isn't just anybody. It's the federal government doing what the federal government itself claims is solely the federal government's job, which is to manage immigration, nationalization, et cetera. So I'm not against the kids being here, but should I show up to Connecticut schools and, you know, there'll be a cold day in hell before they do that, I have a problem with it. If they try to enforce federal law, the reason why I bring this up is because the people who are the primary victims of our completely dysfunctional immigration policy or non-policy are the migrants themselves. And to me, this business of not cooperating, it's essentially what this adds up to, not cooperating with the federal government, is one part of the larger Rube Goldberg that we've set up that perpetuates this problem. And so for that reason, I cannot support the policy.
If I may? It doesn't say not to cooperate. It says to refer everything to the superintendent, and then if the superintendent has questions, that she should consult with our lawyer.
I know, I know how this rolls. I appreciate it, but I know how this rolls. I'm still voting against it.
For the safety of children, I just want everyone to be aware that parents give us on Power School who children are able to go home with, and we monitor that with great care. If the parent isn't picking up the child and someone else is, we need it in writing, it needs to be verified, that we just don't pass off children to just anybody, even the federal government. So I would say that this is really, you know, we would do this with great care, it would come down to me, and I would be checking with the lawyer, so.
And aren't these students minors, basically?
They are.
Any other question?
I really appreciate all the resources, too, for families, for districts and schools all listed on the back of this policy, and for legal, direct legal services, too. So I think it's excellent. Thank you.
That's due to Susan and her staff.
Liz?
I'm just asking, it just came to my mind, is this coming, as all our policy is usually, we're kind of given direction through the state, has there been an increase or situations that have arisen involving children that we may not be aware of, and that's what we are required to give protections to those children? Is that where the impetus for this policy comes from?
It actually was brought to our attention, I think, probably before the new governor came on board, the other governor had really put out legislation that was protecting. But this really was put through CADE, Connecticut Association of Boards of Ed, and through, you know, legal expertise in drafting this. So we really had it on the tracker probably from three, four years ago, and we felt that it was needed to kind of really pay attention to this and put into place some protection through our policy and through the law that backed it up.
So it's already state policy, which would make this redundant.
I know. We're just being extra careful.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of to approve as first reading the policy P 5111.3, protection of undocumented students, and once again, as first reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? Motion has carried. Rita? Would you be willing to read the motion for number two, please?
To recognize September 19th, 2023, as National IT Professionals Day, and to direct the superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to our IT staff. Thank you.
Can I have a second? Andrea Secadine?
I don't know if we should like, you know, put out IT, exactly what that means, rather than.
Instructional technologies, we should have written it down.
Yeah.
See, I think IT is information technology.
It could be, too.
Yes.
Yeah, so instructional technology.
It could be both, yeah.
So we have a second? Any discussion? Aside just writing out what IT stands for in her letter? All right, thank you very much for all the people who support our, even now, more importantly, support our students and our staff in the digital world. So all those in favor to support the motion to recognize September 19th, 2023, as the National IT Professional Day, and to direct the superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to the IT staff. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Another department and director, Dr. Clint Kennedy, who's been working overtime all summer long and in the schools, and, you know, all hands on deck, again, really amazing work.
If you go to central office and look at the bulletin board, you won't wonder what they did all summer, because it's all laid out on the bulletin board.
I'll have him come in to let you guys know, maybe on his mark of appreciation.
Sorry, I'm writing that down so that I don't forget. So as we talked about at the very beginning, we are going, we're going to go forward and do number nine, 10 of our agenda, and then we're going to come back to the potential of going into an executive session. So I will start over by to Dean of any letters, communications, or comments?
No.
No, no, I don't start off with you, or no, you don't have any comments?
I've got no comments.
Okay, thank you.
Said enough.
Jay?
Yes, I received communication from some potential, or I should say some candidates for Board of Ed, and I'm looking forward to speaking with them. I also regret that I was unable to attend the convocation last Friday, but I was told that, Kim, you made a masterful speech, and that I should seek out the YouTube video, and.
To put you to sleep, yes.
Well.
Not at Susan's or anyone else's, but yeah.
And I know we all appreciate your leadership in this district.
Thank you.
I received that same communication from the Board of Ed as a sparring individual, and I look forward to that conversation. And because I had been so out of it, I didn't realize that convocation was last Friday, so I missed it.
Very excused.
We'll forgive you this time.
William?
Nothing to add.
Rita?
I actually have some communications about scheduling at the middle school and how small some of the math classes are, 10 students, less than 10. I guess from what I understand, there's still on board from a few years ago, extra math teachers, but not where the English teachers have 26 kids in the class, 27, but there are math. So I'd like this as a future agenda topic, what's going on there.
It still hasn't been finalized, they're working though.
But if there are extra teachers, maybe they could be redirected someplace else. Just as a taxpayer also, I think it's important to kind of keep on top of this.
I would say that all the cores mostly have about 20 to 24, both at the middle school and the high school. So I haven't seen that.
But not the math at the middle school.
Well, I'm not saying I've seen that yet. I've seen 24, 20 to 24.
So maybe that's something that, Susan, that you'd be willing to kind of.
Yeah.
Investigate for us and kind of get back to us so that we know that, so that it's not out there hanging. I appreciate that.
Liz?
Well, first of all, I went to convocation, and I had a wonderful time, and it was so wonderful. I know I said the word wonderful, but it was really a lot of positive energy in the room, in all the rooms. It seemed like there was, people were ready to get back. They didn't appreciate having to come back on a Friday, but, you know, and I can understand that. I also received communication from somebody who is vying to be a candidate for the Board of Ed, and I wanted to introduce him, he's sitting here in our audience right now, this is Mr. Rob Meade. And so I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for, you know, asking those really good questions, and it's really nice to have somebody who's interested in the board asking the board what it is.
And coming to one of the meetings, we appreciate that.
Yes. And so, and the other thing is, is I was, I have had people ask me also about the numbers in the classrooms, and they seem to be, people were concerned that they may be a bit high. And I said, no, well, they go along with what board policy is. be a bit high. And I said, no, well, they go along with what board policy is. And I said, you know, we, we do keep track of that, but I just wanted to let you know that there is some concern out there. And I, there is something I would like to have you consider for a future topic, and that is, I think we, we have wonderful curriculum coordinators. But this has been on my mind for some time and seeing it's getting towards the end of my tenure, I think I'd better say something now or forever hold my peace. But I do believe that we expect our math science coordinator, I think it's a, it's a heavy lift.
It's STEM.
And I think for STEM. And I, I understand that, but the, it's STEM, but the reality is you have a language arts person who takes care of nothing but language arts. And, you know, the humanities, the departments are small, and so, you know, you, you can handle that in some respects. But I really believe we need to look at that administrative structure at the high school and look at, you know, the equity about what our expectations are from the STEM coordinator. Because it seems like there's a lot of math teachers, a lot of science teachers, engineering. It's a lot. And I just think that we need to really start looking a little bit more carefully at that. So thank you.
So you would like to have that, excuse me, as an agenda item?
Well, I, I would like to have it discussed. I don't know if it's, you know, appropriate.
Well, in order for it to have a discussion.
Yes, I would like it as an agenda topic.
Just asking.
I have one, one more point that, that, when you spoke about that, I've heard also that there are not as many STEM electives at the middle school this year, that they've been, a lot of them have been cut. And I was curious as why, and maybe we could have some information about that also.
Yeah, I think that these are really great things. I'm also encourage each, each of us as a, as individual board members to feel free to drop an email or a phone call to Susan so that she can kind of look that up, so that when you bring that up, that she can actually have the answer. Now it's kind of.
Oh, I don't want the answer now. I think it's a discussion. I mean, I think it needs the principal and so forth.
And so for myself, I did attend the convocation. And Jay, thank you for your kind words. They were actually representing us as a full board, so I appreciate that. But then you guys also need to take credit for your belief and your hard work in the district as well. What I, what excited me about the convocation was more and more of the teachers were not filling up the first, first two back rows of the, of the Fitch Auditorium, that actually they were sitting more in the middle and in front. And if there is ever a indication about people who wanting to be together and I just, I really, that, that hit me really hard about that we are, just really have a staff that are ready and willing to, to work on their craft and to work for our district children. And I just think that's really kind of cool. I have down, we have lots of meetings coming up. I appreciate everyone's, that they bared with me with all the special meetings that we had over the summer. I think many of them were very fruitful and positive, so I really appreciate that. And I also think our working committee, the whole meetings have gone really well, where I think that we've been really able to knock off some great discussions.
Policy is listed here for September 12th, but we will not be meeting in September.
You will not be meeting in September?
That's correct.
Okay. Ms. Joan, did you get that?
Yes, I did.
And, and maybe we could even throw on, oh, I don't know when, when we would do that, just to make sure that our, that liaison meeting from the town council and the Board of Ed gets on there as well. We'll, we'll figure that out. And do I have for agenda items to this point is scheduling of the, of the middle school, public school, but you're going to give us information about that. We have a curriculum, administrative structure looking at the STEM. I'm a little bit of hesitant, hesitation of putting that on in that our, our acting principal is an acting principal, and I don't know if the board wants to make those decisions without having the principal available to make comments and, and questions about that. So that would be my only thought process about that.
You mean, I'm talking about the middle school.
So I'm addressing Liz's.
Oh, Liz's thing.
Oh, okay. I couldn't see where you were pointing. And, and so that would be my only concern is that if we did it too soon, we would not necessarily have a, a sitting, a new sitting principal. And so I'm not quite sure if that would be important for us.
I think honestly that it won't really matter if we have a new principal or not.
Okay.
It's the administrative structure.
Okay.
And that really needs some address, needs to be addressed.
Okay. Do you, do you have what Liz is asking for?
I know. I know the, the situation and the problem.
Okay.
Okay. But we need to work on it.
All right.
Not my support.
I think that that's all the agenda items that have come up. Okay. So we need to go back to our item three. So under new business, and that is the discussion of the superintendent evaluation. I would, there's a couple scenarios on how we could play this. We could go in alone as a board and then invite her, invite Susan in afterwards or, or not. So I just wanted to let you know that we could, I was going to ask, sorry, this was an email that was in my head that never got formed to you, is that if we go into executive session and we come back out to just invite, as in this case, the superintendent, can we do that? Or do we have to end that executive session and go into a new one?
I think you can remain in the executive session.
And just invite.
We're going to be doing.
Okay, so.
It includes these people, us, and then it's going to be including Susan. We'll let her know when to come in and nobody else.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So what he said. So I would like to make, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session to talk about the superintendent's evaluation and compensation with the knowledge that we will eventually be going into, we might be coming and bringing Susan back in. So Susan, please don't leave the building. And so that actually means that, because we have, we have a board member who is online, we need to stay by the microphone so that Beverly can participate with us, but everyone else needs to get offline. And I'm just going to ask for Mark and Caitlin to leave the room as well, and as will, as, as Sam and Phil Piazza.
And thank you, Dr. Phil, for all you're doing for us with the high school, making everybody feel good.
All right. I would like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's, to, to approve a one-year extension of the superintendent's contract and a 2% raise retro of July 1st with a salary of $201,629.52. Could I have a second to that?
Second.
Any, Andrea seconded it, did it?
Oh.
And any discussion?
I would just like to say that Susan has been masterful in leading this district through the challenges of COVID.
Yep.
And the aftermath. And working, you know, so diligently with these grant writing opportunities and the revamping of the curriculum. And, you know, I for one am so appreciative that, that she's leading the district.
I second that.
It's also exciting that we are actually on the map, and that's largely because of your involvement on the state level, on the local level, and on a national level. Your energy, your passion for not just teaching, but all things Groton School District is really, really appreciated. You're amazing.
And with the military.
I'm home again, and I love it, you know.
Yeah. All right. So all those in favor of the motion that is on the floor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
William seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Because you, you moved before I did. Remember that time?
Thank you, Susan.
I, I thought that was hysterical.